The Agoura Hills City Council Goal Setting Workshop. Please silence all cell phones and other electronic devices. If you wish to speak or submit a written comment, please complete a comment card and submit to the city clerk prior to the public comment portion of the workshop. I will now call this meeting to order. And I will defer to the member of our City Council of Staff for the Pledge of Allegiance. So, Ramiro, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I will now defer to the city clerk for the roll call.
Good afternoon. Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Anstett?
Here.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Wolf?
Present.
Mayor Sylvester?
Here.
Mayor Sylvester, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Will the maker of the motion and the second to approve the agenda state your names?
Mayor Protem Wolf, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second. Debra Klein Lopez.
I'll defer to the city clerk for the roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Anstett?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you. We're now moving on to public comments. This section is reserved for public comments related to the goal-setting workshop. If you have something to distribute to the City Council, please hand it to our city clerk. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons addressing the City Council shall not engage in disorderly conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. I will now defer to the city clerk.
Thank you. We did receive one written public comment from Mary Weisbrock, Agoura Hills, representing Save Open Space. That will be part of the record, and it was distributed to council. We do have speakers this evening. Our first is Peter Feller, followed by Carolyn Trassino.
You have three minutes to speak, and it'll end when the red light appears on the podium.
Madam Mayor, City Council members and staff, my name is Peter Feller, and I'm president of the nonprofit Agoura Hills Fire Safe Council. The Agoura Hills Fire Safe Council, formed just eighteen months ago, is focused solely on helping protect life and property from wildfire here in Agoura Hills. In the short period of time, we've developed ten recognized firewise communities and one more in the process. We have 4,854 residences that are currently part of a firewise community. That's sixty-four percent of all Agoura Hills residences and another six percent on the way. We send out a monthly newsletter that goes out to over twenty-two hundred residents with an average open rate of fifty-five percent. Hundreds of communities' firewise certificates have been downloaded and submitted to their insurance companies. We have twenty-six firewise community leaders. We are a well-respected firewise, fire-safe council in the region. We collaborate with neighboring cities and communities. We've done all of this on a shoestring budget and thousands of volunteer hours. Council members, you've watched all these accomplishments happen in a short period of time, but we're only just beginning. You've seen that our Fire Safe Council is organized, well-managed, and effective. Imagine how much more we can accomplish with your help. We thank you for your assistance in the past, and we look forward to further partnering to protect life and property in Agoura Hills. We understand you have lots of requests. What we do is important work. Unfortunately, wildfire mitigation must take priority. We must take responsibility for choosing to live in this wooey community. Your budget allocations will save lives and property. Immediate upcoming campaigns include, number one, increase the amount of home assessments. Unfortunately, the RCD cannot keep up with demand. We've trained volunteers ready to assist. Showing residents their vulnerabilities on their property has proven to be the best way to affect change. Number two, expand our ember-resistant mesh campaign for outdated and exposed events, including materials and installation training. Number three, hold more in-person and online educational events. It is normal for admin expenses of these kind of projects to be around twenty percent. We request that budget allocations allow for this. We are here for you, and we appreciate our partnership. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Carolyn Trassino, followed by Serena Nuzzi.
Good afternoon, Mayor Sylvester, City Council, and city staff. The Old Agoura Homeowners Board of Director supports the Public Works Subcommittee's plan to rehabilitate Chesbrough Road from the park entrance to the city's northern limits in early fiscal year 2026 to 2027. The road has deteriorated over the years, causing public safety issues and legal exposure for the city. There are deep ruts on the shoulders. The flooding after the Woolsey Fire worsened this condition, and the road condition continues to crumble. Residents reported severe traffic-related safety problems during the recent Kenneth Fire evacuation due to Chesbrough's poor condition. Our community values its farm animals, including alpacas, donkeys, horses, sheep, and goats. During the Kenneth Fire, horse trailers could not pull over on sections of Chesbrough Road because of the road's dilapidated paving and shoulder conditions. Both sides of the road need improvement as we are requiring parking and safe pathways for evacuating farm animals in the event of a fire. We commend the council's Public Works Subcommittee's efforts to improve our roads and seek grants to restore and create pathways in Old Agoura to provide safety for both residents and visitors. We appreciate the Public Works staff's recent focus on inspecting Chesbrough Road regularly north of the park entrance for any area needing temporary repairs, with the intention of constructing the permanent repairs in the summer. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Serena Nuzzi.
I wanted to piggyback on what Carolyn just said, but I'm also here to voice my support for the continued implementation of the Trails Master Plan, and specifically the maintenance, repair, and construction of Old Agoura's horse trails. One of the goals you will consider tonight is the design for trails and bikeway improvements in Old Agoura. The plan is to budget consulting fees, as far as I understand, for the design phase through the end of 2027. I hope that the next two and a half years of design work will concurrently budget for some active reconstruction. I wanted to reiterate the urgency for some interim repairs to the roadway where flooding and deferred maintenance currently prevent access to the public easements along both sides of Chesbrough. I also hope to get clarification on the timing to amend the current poor road and trail conditions. While it is a residential neighborhood, Chesbrough serves more than just its residents, as it attracts external users to the National Recreation Area, horse borders, as well as being a major artery for utilities and fire maintenance to the north. Safety is our primary concern, particularly during times of emergency evacuations. So please ensure that the city's budget earmarks near-term repairs to allow safe passage and public easement use. Thank you.
We have no further speaker cards.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to a discussion of the City Council's short- and long-term goals. I will defer to City Manager Nathan Hamburger for the staff presentation.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and councilmembers and community members, thank you for being here this afternoon. And this is the exciting part of our budget process, as we've run everything out and we flushed it through all our subcommittees and had some great discussions and public input, so we appreciate everybody's participation. Moving to the next slide, and we'll talk just, our goal today is, I will read through all of the proposed goals and the recommendations from each of the subcommittees to you, and then, as we go through it, we'll pause and get feedback. But our goal today is to get the ultimate list of priorities for the upcoming two budget fiscal years, and then we will include those in the budget so that we can then prepare the final budget for the June budget meeting with the City Council. And we'll also have in between that a finance subcommittee meeting, which will go over all those details as well. So, I just want to touch on progress of the budget, and we continue to work internally on our operational items. I do want to identify that, as many of you know, this is probably a tough year from a lot of government agencies budgeting-wise. There's just a ton of uncertainty. We're really trying to dig through what is rhetoric and what is real, and to get to realistic projections. And I appreciate all our finance team and our staff for working with us and trying to accomplish that. In looking at the proposed goals, I do want to upfront say that it appears that all of the proposed goals that are in the, are supposed to be in the general fund, we may not be able to fund all of those at that price. And so today is an opportunity to discuss, what are your top priorities? And then we'll also, I have some options that the council can discuss, so that maybe we move some goals to a following year, or reduce some of those numbers. We've tried to find some creative ways, so I'll go over all those details as we move forward with this. With these goals, you'll notice there is quite a few goals that have asked for staff time to be put on them, which is perfectly fine, but I do want to identify that at that point, we probably are at capacity of the workload that we can handle with just the normal day-to-day operations. And so, I'm just going to touch real quickly on a couple of our expenditure items that have come up. These do not need decisions today. I just want you to be aware that they're things that we'll be considering. We've been approached by the Greater Canaho Chamber of Commerce in looking to establish a membership and possible sponsorship of programs. We will bring that item back to the council at your budget workshop. We received a federal grant for a microgrid here at our Civic Center. We have completed all of the application and program requirements. We're still waiting the grant funding agreement. And as you recall, there is a match from that, and we would utilize the city's facilities fund, which is in our general fund reserve, and that is monies that have been put aside specifically to maintain public facilities. So as we move forward with that, we'll continue to come back with that, but just know that we've earmarked those monies for that microgrid, and we anticipate it coming in the next budget year. And then, the Ladyface Greenway project is, you know, we have, we've taken bonds. Because all of the project is funded through grants and special funds, the city needs to front the money or put it out front while we do the work, and then seek reimbursement. So, the only cost to the city is just the interest payments, long-term, but we are fronting the money, so that is part of what our general fund reserve is used for, moving forward as we look at the budget. So as we move into the next couple, handful of slides, I'm going to turn it over to our finance team to talk about our sales tax presentation and property tax. And I'm trying a different approach this year. We've had our consultants do it in the past. I'm going to have staff do it, and hopefully we can, we're going to try to keep it as concise as possible. But I do feel that it's important for you to have this information for the community to understand this information as we put together our budget and our goals. With that, I'll turn it over to Diego and Brenda.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. As City Manager has explained, we are knee-deep in our budget presentation, or budget preparation, excuse me. And I will be giving a presentation on our sales tax, which is one of the major revenues for our city. And Brenda Cho, Finance Manager, will be providing a presentation on property tax. Just a quick look at the agenda slide. There's the sales tax presentation. We're also taking a look at the federal, state, and a citywide level of impact of policies that have been, come into effect since the beginning of the year and the new administration. And I will conclude with what the approach is to getting our budget, our sales tax budget forecast in order. Next slide, please. From this, the city of Agoura Hills currently has a 9.75 sales tax within city limits. Of that total, 3.9375% is collected into the state general fund. One percent of that is received into the general fund of the city of Agoura Hills. The remaining 4.81% is distributed across various measures, county transportation, and other public and safety housing initiatives. A quick highlight this year. Effective April 1st, 2025, Measure A was introduced and replaced Measure H. Measure A seeks to address the issue of homelessness, and the allocation to the city of Agoura Hills is $71,046. This distribution would not be collected by the city, but will instead be distributed to the local solutions fund, which is the Las Virgen's Malibu Cog. Next slide, please. This year has been a challenge to forecast. With federal administration policies changing daily and events reacting to news and political action, many of the resources the staff used to forecast have proven difficult to formulate a trend. So staff decided to take a conservative approach to the budget while paying attention to the overall economic landscape. On the national scale, interest rates continue to stay high and affect accessibility to credit and equity. There's been a discussion of an urgency to lower interest rates, but that could lead to rapid inflation, and the Fed is trying to still control that. The discussion of tariffs has created an environment of conscious spending by consumers. Many people are buying current inventory to store and have enough on hand to avoid any higher prices in the future. As of Monday, the administration announced a trade agreement, one of the nation's trading partners, but that was a pause, and consumers and investors are still uncertain of what could happen in the summer. Gas prices might have decreased slightly but are still high and will affect consumers' willingness to travel, whether local or destination vacation. Gas prices will make the consumer question their habits, such as going out for dining, a theater show, or saving. Lastly, grocery prices continue to gain attention, and we have all heard about the price of eggs. The price is high due to bird flu affecting the supply, and the high demand by consumers is eggs are inelastic, meaning a change in price will not reduce demand. High grocery prices are also attributed to supply chain issues, increased production costs, and in rising labor costs. Next slide, please. In California, the economy is being affected by issues of employment, and there have been some layoffs in the tech industry, a reduction of labor supply in the agriculture sector, an increase in minimum wage. The implementation of tariffs could see minimal activity of California ports, which trickles down, affecting personnel at the ports, delivery truck drivers, and the availability of products in stores. California has to address the issue of affordable housing and limited supply. With the Palisades and Eaton Fires at the beginning of the year, housing supply in Southern California has shrunk. Lastly, the city of Agoura Hills also benefits from the film industry, and the most recent news item of tariffs on films could lead to increased production costs that affect the city's surrounding industries, such as restaurants and hotels. Next slide. This is a look at the local economy here at the city of Agoura Hills. The top industries for the city are service stations, casual dining, home furnishings, quick-service restaurants, and grocery stores. All these industries have been impacted by the issues that staff has just presented, and have to stake in a conservative approach to forecasting sales tax revenue for the upcoming year. The city's revenue consultant did provide cautious guidance for '25, '26, but provided an increase in the '26, '27 fiscal year. This concludes the staff presentation on sales tax, and now Brenda Cho will present on property tax.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. So I'll be presenting a brief overview of the city's property tax forecast. Property tax is one of the main sources of revenue for the city, and we contract with HDL, who provides advanced property tax analysis and forecasting services, and I'll be presenting their analysis with you today. In California, the property tax rate is up to 1% of the market value, and the assessed value is limited to a 2% annual increase. So forecasting property tax revenue includes estimating the growth of future years by making reasonable assumptions to the current year's assessed value. Next slide, please. For this forecast, a CPI factor of 2% is applied each year. Additionally, for properties sold, the difference between the value on the tax roll and the price paid for the property has been calculated and included in the analysis. Typically, homeowners who have been in their homes for a long period of time have a home value that is often lower than the market value. So the 2% inflation and the transfer of property ownership are the main contributors to the increase in property taxes. So in addition to the regular apportionment of taxes, the city also receives property tax revenues in lieu of vehicle license fees. So the VLF revenue increases each year based on a percentage growth value within the city. Next slide, please. This chart shows a five-year revenue forecast. The first row shows the estimated net taxable value, followed by the 1% property tax rate. The 1% tax gets allocated to various agencies, including the county, school districts, and special districts. So of that 1% allocation, the city receives about 6%, which is bolded on the slide and will be used for our budgetary purposes. Next year's property tax revenue is estimated at $3.65 million, which is an increase of 3.5% from the current fiscal year. And that concludes my presentation on property tax.
Thank you, Ms. Cho and Ms. Ibanez. So I will take back over and dive into the subcommittees, the fun stuff now. And so, I'm going to start, just so you know, I'll talk about any goals that we may carry over, need to carry over, that are currently going on. Then we will talk about the recommended goals from each subcommittee, and any goals that are not recommended, and then I will pause to get feedback from the council and have any discussions. And if, at the end of this, I do have a slide, if you want to talk about any of the general fund proposed goals, we can do that at the end, or you can do it at each subcommittee, whatever you prefer is fine, but I'll pause and allow you to do that. So, the Land Use Economic Development Subcommittee. The two items that we'll carry into next year that we'll continue working on in the Oak Tree Ordinance update, we've added special trees, or are different than oak trees, at the request of the public and council. We also have our housing site plan, which has remained untouched at this point, so we'll continue to work on that. And I will go into the recommended goals. So the recommended goals of the Old Agoura Commercial Overlay Design Standards. This would require two-plus years of budgeting and work, and possibly a sequence, depending on what's actually done. The estimate for that is, and recommended for $75,000 over two years, so for each year. The next goal is the solar and generator backup system. So this is, the system screenings that happen, and this is one that the subcommittee recommended moving forward with, but only to utilize staff time and any legal review that's required, and then to consider pausing enforcement while we do the review. The next item is the hillside ordinance review for amendment at $60,000, would be out of the general fund. The next is artificial turf, and review the allowance in residential zones. And the recommendation is to provide analysis and bring back different options and any exceptions to the use of artificial turf, and that would be at a staff time, no recommended dollars for that. The final one that was recommended is to look at a possible downtown public gathering space, and to explore locations for a possible private-public partnership. And then I'm just going to touch on the two goals that were not recommended to move forward, rent stabilization and renter protection. Part of that reasoning behind that is, it would not apply to a majority of the rental facilities within the city because of the age of the buildings. And so, it's something that if the council desires to look at in the future years, as those buildings grow older, that would be a possibility. And then, also, the one, the other one not recommended to move forward is review of group home legislation and legal rulings for policy. So I will pause and take any comments, feedback from the council, any discussion you want to have, and if the subcommittee has any comments they'd like to make as well.
Thank you. Before we start, I just want to clarify, for all of these goals, we're looking at $150,000.
That would be my recommended amount, if you can summarize here.
For the total.
In general fund.
So I just want everyone to understand that we're being told we can only assign $150,000 to all these. Very. to all these various projects, and that's why some things are being reduced, some things may have to get pushed, and we have to, you know, decide between us what the priorities are with the limited funds that we have at this time. Councilmember Klein-Lopez, since you and I are both on the Economic Development Subcommittee, would you like to start?
Sure. These were all, I think, for the most part, no-brainers. The tough one, well, there were two. The tough one was artificial turf. You know, we weren't comfortable making a flat-out recommendation to the council on whether to keep it or to ban it. My big concern is really, does it align with our climate action and adaptation plan? And depending on the answer to that, knowing that there were, I'm concerned that there are some chemicals and things like that that are in artificial turf that could end up harming our area if, for example, there's a fire or something. So we need to do a little bit of analysis on it to see if that's the case, and then once we have that information, we thought we would bring it back to the council for full discussion. We did not feel ready to make any kind of recommendation on something that was so, so big. So I wanted to mention something on that. The solar and generator backup systems code amendments, that's really not meant not to penalize people who are getting batteries. Again, a lot of this goes back to Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, so there are some codes that basically say if you have a battery, it has to be covered by a screen, you know, something protruding from your house. We want to make sure we are encouraging people to have these kinds of backup systems without overburdening them on, with code compliance. And then the other thing I'll say is I'm very excited about the last issue, the possible downtown public gathering space. We definitely want to make sure we understand some of the impacts of Agora and Canaan Roads and think outside the box and really try to figure out if we have other options to have gatherings, maybe another theater, maybe some civic center activities, things like that. And then I just want to ask, just to clarify with our city manager, after this study, if we do find other places that might be a possible downtown or something that looks like that, obviously, I would think we would consider mixed use as part of that. And so if there is housing that would come with that, is it possible, without opening up our housing element, is it possible just to ask HCD about any impacts that that additional housing may have on our housing element? The reason I ask is because obviously there's a lot of pressure right now on Canaan Road, and I'm trying to think of ways that we can ease that pressure without putting our housing element at risk. So I guess, what would the impact of that be on housing? Is that, am I making sense, sir?
Yeah, that makes sense, Councilmember Klein-Lopez. So I think that it would be, yes, if, I think everything's on the table, if so, mixed use, and that would include housing, then it would be something that we would reach out to HCD and discuss with them, any impacts that would be on the city, and I think that would be part of the analysis that would be, needed to be provided to the city council.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was included in the analysis, because, you know, it's obviously a big concern of everyone on the council and in the community.
All right. Okay. So knowing that we only have $150,000, some of these goals, I don't think we're going to be able to finance this year. I think the Old Agora Commercial Overlay Design Standards, as much as I would like to prioritize them, I think we're going to have to choose between that and the trails. And I think we have to say which is going to have the greatest impact immediately, and I think it's the trails at this point, because those are, as we've heard this evening, you know, areas where we already have problems with evacuations and getting trailers in and out and all the other issues that you've raised. So, and I think the overlay design standards, it's not that many parcels at this point. So while I think it's extremely important, I think we may have to look at that, because we did say $75,000 over two years. So that's one area where I would be willing to give a little bit. And I just want to clarify, too, with the solar generator and backup system screenings, it's not going to cost anything. Right now, if you already have a backyard fence and you put something in, like a solar generator into your backyard, you have to then create another little fence around it, which is a bit silly, because it's already fenced in. So that's why we're going to just put a pause on that code. Nothing bad is going to happen. You still won't see it from the outside. It just means you won't have to duplicate it. Again, the hillside ordinance, $60,000, we are not going to have that this year. So if we can look at that, and if there's some way we can do this internally and bring the cost down, I agree with you with artificial turf, and there's no cost to that at this time. And again, I think we're going to have to push back on the public gathering space downtown, because we don't have $50,000 to assign at this point. So I hate to be a Scrooge, but I think we've got to seriously look at what we can and cannot do, and we haven't got to the other committees yet, so we'll move on. But just bear in mind that we're all going to have to give up something if we're going to keep it at 150. Moving on.
Yes, sorry. I'm, it's a little bit different than how we discussed it in the subcommittee.
Well, I didn't know then that we only had $150,000.
All right. Well, I'm going to make my case again for these possible downtown public gathering spaces, because I think the current pressure that is being placed upon the Agora Village is coming to a boiling point in our community, and I think we have to start thinking outside the box to relieve that pressure. So I'm going to advocate for that one.
But maybe not at $50,000.
Well, that's the beginning. That is the study. That's what they cost. So I do think that that's an appropriate amount. I, I think the other thing, the hillside ordinance, the reason why I believe I'm the one who brought that up is because our hillside ordinance, as I see it right now, and Candace, you can, or our city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not sure how much teeth it has these days with California state law. So I want to make it so that we can actually use it and not just have it and say, well, it's great that we have it, but we can't use it because it won't hold up in court. So to me, it's important that we protect our hillsides with laws that we can actually put some heft behind. So those are the two that I would advocate for. And I look forward to hearing from my other council members.
Yes. Moving on to the next, oh, sorry, Councilmember Enz.
So, Mayor, thank you. One clarifying question on the amount. So it's 150 available to us from the General Fund.
Correct.
And so I did some quick math, thank you, to the calculator on my phone. So it looks like we have $570,000 in requests total. Does that sound about right?
Yeah.
So there's, so any of the special fund projects?
Well, that was maybe my second point. That's just from the General Fund.
And I don't want the council to feel like, I'm not trying to limit you. I'm just trying to be realistic in the number that I think we can actually come together as a budget and keep things balanced. Somewhere in the range of $150,000. It's not a hard, fast number, but it's a recommended number that we've looked at internally that we think we can keep the balance, a balanced budget and present that to you in June.
And you then got to my second point. There are at least two items, there might have been more, that I might have missed that do not come out of the General Fund. And so those, the things that come out of Measure JBU are things that are separate from the General Fund and don't have to fall under that 150.
Yeah.
Measure M, yes.
Yeah. Anything out of special, I don't want to jump ahead, but just in general, anything in special funds at this point that's recommended.
Is safe.
Is able to be funded, so you know.
And it is actually helpful to have kind of that umbrella perspective as we're walking in, so that was one of my questions. The second one was around the downtown study. I did notice that the end in the options, there was a $30,000, an option for $30,000 instead of $50,000. So I was curious a little bit about what our flexibility, excuse me, what our flexibility is with what we would do in looking at the downtown.
I think the council has full flexibility in, so when you establish those priorities and then just what dollar figure you put behind it, that's really what is for discussion. And I just tried to put some numbers in there just so that we can have a discussion on it. It doesn't, please don't feel that you have to hold to that or that, I'm just trying to give some parameters so that I understand that the goals the council has set from the community are extremely important, and so I'm trying to help maneuver a way until we can get the most amount of the goals of the council accomplished and still remain within a budget number that's realistic.
So let me ask just one more question on that, and then I've got one more question, and then I'm done. So what would the 50, what would we be doing with the $50,000?
It would be partially a study looking at several different properties. Another option that we can look at is we could do some of that work internally, because you may need to rezone a property if it's not already, like in the Agora Village specific plan or something that has like a mixed-use designation. And so it would require a little bit of studying and then also some internal work in presenting that to the council, and then potentially, if you have any zone change, bring, you know, preparing that information and getting that information to the council.
So there may be ways to move forward with this goal that are a much lower cost than $50,000, but that would involve more staff time that we would have to be thinking about?
It would, yes.
Okay. And then, last but not least of my questions, I know that there are certain members of our audience that are very interested in the sober living, so can the subcommittee or the staff say a little bit more about that, why that wasn't a recommended goal?
Yes. Can I lean on our legal counsel here on the, because of all the issues, the legal issues with sober living facilities? Oh, sorry. Well, can I lean on our city manager then?
Sure. I think the discussion really revolved around what possibly could be done, and then to what extent would it, would the impact on the city be? And some of, in discussing kind of staffing that it will require, it would probably require some additional staffing, and that was a higher cost to manage some of this. And then the impactfulness of what was proposed and how many, you know, how many potential properties it would impact, I think they just had to prioritize different things, and so that was really part of that conversation.
Yeah, the legal precedent is not set, and cities that are introducing this are having to front quite heavy bills.
Yeah, so I think Costa Mesa is the one city that's commonly referred to. They have, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but it's in, I believe in the hundreds of different homes, sober homes, that they're impacting their community. With a smaller number here, from a legal standpoint, I think the discussion also revolved around just that it wouldn't.
That we didn't have enough.
Didn't have enough to make it worthwhile.
I don't know what subcommittee I was sitting in, because some of this discussion is not what I remember. But I, really, it had more to do with the fact that there's still not legal precedent for us to be able to regulate them in a way that holds up to federal discrimination laws.
Well, exactly, because if it's just a house that's a group home and they're not having any counseling or, you know, treatments in that home, I mean, having a meeting to discuss chores and things like that doesn't count. So it has to be actual, a doctor on the premises or a psychiatrist for it to.
Well, I don't want to get into the actual issue too deep, but my recollection of our council meeting and our discussion was that the City of Agoura Hills is, is different than the, we are a contract city, which is different than a charter city, which is, puts us in a different scenario of the rulings, and we are not going to be the, at legal risk of being the one to go up against courts that have not decided on this issue yet. That's what I remember. No, I'm sorry, you cannot speak when we're in the middle of this, George. I understand, we all know how you feel about this, but whether you believe us or not, the, my understanding is that the legal precedent has still not been set for cities like ours, and so this is why I, anyway, didn't feel that it was worth our budget to be able to put so much money at legal risk when we don't know, and I see your mic on, which I would appreciate.
Yeah, I apologize. I just didn't know what the discussion was in the subcommittee, so I couldn't opine on what you talked about, but I would say that is a correct assessment, that this is not a slam dunk. We can't just take that case and say it applies to us and we're not going to have any legal problems. So I think we're just in a stage where we're monitoring the appeals and the cases, and you are correct.
That's what my decision, that's what led my decision in the subcommittee, not that we were too small or that we didn't have enough.
And this was before we knew about our budgetary restrictions as well. So it was already taken on those legal grounds. Okay, thank you.
And actually, because I know this is such an important issue, can I ask our city attorney to just expand a little bit about what you understand? And yeah, I saw you grimace, so whatever you're able to do.
I'm sorry, it's not on the agenda technically, so I don't think we can talk about that at this time.
While we're still on the land use and economic development, can I make a comment about, so I understand that we have the budgetary constraints, but hearing right now regarding this possible downtown, I know that the 50K is a high option, and, but it is something I feel like is one of the most pressing issues facing the city and one of our biggest challenges that we're dealing with, to come up with creative solutions to deal with the pressures that are being put on us from state policy. And so coming into this meeting, I felt a different way, but looking at this now, this is something that I kind of think would be really valuable to include, and I would like to explore that, especially the impacts that it could have on our city, what it could mean with these creative solutions. So I just want to voice that.
No, thank you. And when we get to the end and we see where we are with what we're willing to cut and not cut, then that's when we have to get down to the hard decisions.
Understood. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Anstead.
Sure. I'd like to make two comments, too, or a couple of comments on some of the projects. I think I'm actually in agreement concerning the 50K for the downtown. I don't know if I'd necessarily say specific downtown, but for economic development, we need to put a priority on economic development in this city, because we've lost a lot of businesses, and there's a lot of empty buildings in our city, and I'd like to see that changed. And I think I share my concerns with my fellow council members on that issue, so I definitely would like to have some goal around that. On the hillside ordinance, I know it could be, it could be a priority in a normal year that we have the budget, but unfortunately, I would say I would be in agreement to also eliminate that as a goal. I just, I don't see $60,000 on that as a goal for a top priority. I just can't, in a budget-tight year, I just don't see us having that as a top priority. And then the, and the same with artificial turf. I know there is some homes that have put the artificial turf in, and I'm concerned also for the environment, but I, again, think.
That has no budgetary.
No budgetary impact.
Yeah.
All right. I think those are, those are my comments.
Thank you.
You're good.
And can I just ask a clarifying, because this is my, what, seventh, sixth year doing this? This is different, city manager. Usually, by the time it came to us at this level, it was some, because it had gone through the subcommittee, and because we talked about the budgetary impacts in subcommittee, we weren't having this discussion here. So can you just clarify, like, I feel like we should have done this in subcommittee. This is different than we've done it in years past.
You're right, and, but it was brought up in the subcommittees that there's going to be some budgetary strains. We didn't know the extent of them. But the priorities were still brought forward and recommended by the subcommittee, and so the council then needs to discuss those and decide where the priorities are. So I've tried to guide as much as we possibly So I've tried to guide as much as we possibly can, and in this presentation as well. But we can't fund all of them, and.
All of them in all the?
Well, the general fund, impact items, if you want to fund all of them, we would need to make additional cuts somewhere else.
So, but we're only on land use. So my question is, we're going to have this conversation with every single one, because every one of our committees brought too much to the table?
There were, yes.
Yes. So we can chat later, but that's just different than we've done it in the past. So I wish I would have known that, because then I think in subcommittees, we could have, we could have prioritized and made a prioritization recommendation to the council. Then, this feels very haphazard. So I'm just confused, because it's not the way we have done it in the past.
Yeah. And again, that's, we are in a unique, I mean, I gotta be honest, a lot has changed in two weeks. So I didn't, none of staff knew any of these numbers. And my goal is to present you something that's feasible. But I, that's why I'm here, trying to, trying to help prioritize these and get a real list.
Okay, so fair. And then maybe knowing that we are in unprecedented times, as we say these days, future goal-setting sessions can have some prioritization recommendations as well from the subcommittees.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
So we're not duking it out like this on the dais for 45 minutes.
This is unpleasant tonight, because it's nothing any of us were expecting to be having to discuss at this extent, you know, the cutting to this extent. All right, shall we move on?
Yeah, we'll move on to environmental responsibility. So the tree inventory review and come up with a replacement and trimming plan for the two-year cycle, that had a $100,000 price tag on it. And I have essentially gone back and talked with our contractor, and staff has found we could do this for $25,000. It would just be to put the plan together, but that would not include any additional replacements of native trees. And then the second item is the Liberty Canyon Creek Restoration Softening Approach. In order to prepare plans, it had a cost of $225,000. It would be at a Measure W. The subcommittee did say that they were willing to move this to year two, or to consider. And LA County does have a plan for the area as well. We're not sure if they're going to move forward with theirs 100% at this point, but I'm just putting that out there for discussion. I'll pause there. Those are the only two goals with that, the subcommittee.
Do you want to go?
I'm going to start with Liberty Canyon first. Where this came about was there's currently really no green space in Liberty Canyon, and there was a grassy area at the end that was put, DG was put in. We also, one of the council goals three years ago was a creek restoration study, and the only option, feasible option that came up was this Liberty Canyon Creek. So while I love the idea of it, I think this is something that we do need to push to next year. There's a lot of things in motion right now with what's going on in Liberty Canyon, because the county is doing a project, and we're learning what that's going to look like, what the impacts are going to be. So I don't think we have enough information right now to make a solid decision on that. So that's my opinion on that one. Kate, councilmember Anderson, can I turn it to you for, regarding the Liberty Canyon Creek?
Absolutely. And let me just ask a clarifying question. I'm very comfortable deferring what we do until we have a better sense of what's happening with the county. Do we have the money in Measure W, though?
We currently do, yes.
Okay. So if, is there a world where if the county does move forward, and we have that funding then, that we then have a contingency where we then could move forward?
If, you're asking if the county decides not to move forward with their plans?
Well, I think what I'm hearing councilmember Wolf say is that he believes it makes sense to defer, in part because we don't know what the county is doing, and that what we would like to do would be, we would like to be in synchronicity with the county. And so if the county does in fact move forward, could we have this as a, rather than just saying, no, we're not going to do anything at all, could we say if the county moves forward, then since we have this funding, we then could move forward as well?
I think, I just want to make sure I understand that. You're saying if the county moves forward, and then we decide to move forward as well?
I think what you're saying, then, once we get information about what the county's doing, and we have a, we know that this is what they're going to do, then could the city come in with the Measure W funds?
Yes, yes, absolutely. I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly.
Yes, yes, yes. And Jeremy, thank you. Yeah.
And with Liberty Canyon, I think there's other options, too, besides just the naturalization. There could be other Measure W-type uses for it that could enhance it. But I think if we're okay the plan to kind of hear what the county does and then move forward.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then can we, can we move on the tree? Is that okay? Okay. This was an item that councilmember Anderson and I discussed, and it, it makes sense, it's expensive, and I know that we're looking at $25,000 option. But to take an inventory of our native trees, and it's really biodiversity, fire safety, water quality, quality of life. But I do understand that in, we're a tough budgetary year. So I'd like to hear your pitch and what the fellow council members feel about it.
I absolutely think that $100,000 is not affordable, given what we've got. And I would like to see us move forward with something, because not only is it biodiversity and all of those things, I was at our Santa Monica Mountain Conservancy meeting last night, and Joe Edmundston was talking about native trees as being ember catchers. So fire safety and fire resiliency is a super high priority for me. I know it is for the community. So I see this tree inventory as being dual benefit. It is both that biodiversity and it is fire resiliency. So of our, I know 25,000 even is a big chunk. And we'll see, but I would like to see.
Well, what we don't know yet is what that grant is going to allow us to do. So there may be the possibility of doing a tree inventory within the parameters of that grant, then it wouldn't have to come out of general funds.
Well, you know, it's so funny that you say that, because I was wondering, I was referring to the Santa Monica Mountain Conservancy just for the tree ember, or the tree, the ember catcher piece of it. But yes, we do have that $100,000 grant from the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, and I haven't seen that in here. So maybe that is something we could use that for.
Yeah, I know that the exact parameters of what we can use it for have not necessarily been defined. And those are typically done in a grant agreement. That is not available yet. And so I know in general that it's supposed to be for fire resilience, and it could be for planning, it could be for implementation. But the specifics of exactly what it can be used for, we don't have that direction yet. And that's typical with most grants.
Interesting. Okay.
When is your next meeting?
Right. Well, but we certainly have the opportunity to connect with Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy folks. So maybe what we do, since we're not making final, final decisions tonight, maybe what we do is we defer this with this possibility that maybe if the grant wouldn't allow this, that we would come back and ask for this to be a part of it. Though, based on the conversation that we had at the meeting when it was approved, which was two meetings ago, this very much seems as though there's a high likelihood that it could be included. So no guarantees, but maybe that could be some.
Maybe you can work your magic.
I think tree removal would fall under fire preparation, and planting native trees in place of that. That, it's pretty clear that would be something that would work.
So, but we'd have to do.
But I don't know about the planning part.
But we'd have to do the inventory before we remove the trees anyway, to know what has to be removed.
If you want to have, well, if you want to have a plan for trimming and replacement, yes. We could just remove trees. I mean, it'd be better to have a plan, I will tell you that much, but it would make a lot more sense.
Perhaps we, it makes sense for us to take it offline and have a conversation with Joe and Rory. My memory of that meeting was that there was a lot of discussion about planning, because part of it was wanting to be able to take something up to Sacramento. So that's what makes me feel like a plan could also be part of the grant.
Well, we've reached out, but we'll continue to do that, and I'm sure we'll get an answer. And I can bring it back at the Budget Workshop to the council, and then we can identify where you'd like to, you know, utilize $100,000 if you'd like.
Good. Thank you. And any other comments? Okay, moving on.
All right. Public Works is a large one. So just the bikeway master plan, the SECA document will continue into next year, and that was anticipated to be a multi-year project. We'll move into proposed goals. First is the waste hauling franchise agreement option. The recommendation coming from the subcommittee is to, for staff to work with our consultant to bring forth a report to the council with all of your options on it. That costs about $20,000 out of our solid waste fund. The second recommended goal is to enhance median landscaping on Canaan Road from Thousand Oaks Boulevard to the city boundaries. The subcommittee was recommending utilizing our existing landscape budget, and it would, we completed over three years. And to be clear, that would, it's not that we're doing just a section by section. We would plant throughout, and then every year kind of fill in those so that you had a full median. So that was the recommendation. The next is the stormwater diversion structures. As you're aware, we've, we've gone to bid, and we have funding for six of the 10 that were originally designed and planned for, that we will be moving forward with. And the recommendation from the subcommittee was that we look for additional funding to complete the four structures that we didn't currently have funding for. So there's just staff time associated with that. The next is to develop an action plan and funding options for Lake Lindero, with the condition that the city would gain some type of recreational use or benefit for the community at large. This would be at a special fund, $75,000 to complete a study out of Measure W. And the final recommended goal is to design and fund the trails and bikeway improvements in Oldagora over a multi-year process. And again, if the council so desires to keep this goal, which I understand is a priority, we can look at reducing the funding in the first year, but continue funding in the second. And so we can keep that moving forward, just reduce some of that money if that's, you know, the desire of the council. I'm going to go to the goals that were not recommended. Explore the possibility of entry signs on Agoura Road and Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Refreezing removal from a private HOA entrance sign, which would actually, after looking at it, require a full replacement. Assistant action planning regarding the hillside slope on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And just so you know, staff has spoken with their project manager, they have an engineer on board. We will continue to work with them, but this goal is not moving forward because we're not putting any funding or anything beyond our normal, what we would help anybody in this situation with. And then the final one that was not recommended was the additional vehicle charging stations for electric vehicles. So I will pause and see if there's any questions, comments from the council.
I'll start, again, regarding goals not selected. City manager, hamburger, can you just explain a little bit regarding the vehicle charging station and some of the parameters, why that wasn't feasible, just for the public?
If I recall, the discussion with the subcommittee was just that where would we put those, and the numbers that required, sometimes that comes with a grant. Typically, there's a minimum of 10 plus. And so they wanted us to look, maybe partner with, you know, private properties, but that we couldn't go in necessarily and put them in. And then if we're looking at public facilities, we're really looking at our parks. And in putting them at these two facilities that we're at here takes away additional parking. And so those, it was just kind of the parameters of what the grants that are out there, and then what would be required to do that.
And then it was also, I think, our understanding that there were no real incentives or programs that were available at this time for it that would make it financially infeasible.
Correct.
So I just wanted that to be mentioned. Just the stormwater diversion, I'm really excited about that and thrilled that we also, Measure W funds were awarded to this project also. And I'm glad about Lake Lindero, that we can also use the Measure W. For me, the one that sticks out is the, the priority is the design and funding for the trails and bikeway improvement in Oldagora. And looking, and without, Kate, can I turn it over to you?
Absolutely. So couldn't agree more in everything that you said. I'm super, super thrilled about the stormwater diversion. That is fantastic. I am also really grateful that we have the funds in Measure W to explore Lake Lindero. This is a win-win-win. It's a win for the residents of Lake Lindero. I think a lot of them would like to see changes they're not happy, both with certainly the current situation that they are in with the lawsuit. And they're not happy with the way that that lake is being maintained or not maintained. It's a win for residents. It could be a win for residents of Agoura, of all of Agoura Hills, because it could be additional recreation. Wait, where is Amy? There she is, in the back. And then it's a win for the environment, because that water is awful, and it is, it is feeding into our watershed. So it's terrible, it's, it's a win for all three. And then the good news is that we wouldn't be able to even contemplate taking that on, but for proposition force. So the good news is, there is the possibility of being able to do this with money that would come from the state that wouldn't have to come from the city. So very excited about that. And then I agree that the Oldagora Trails. And actually, let me be in inquiry for a moment. My understanding is, we talked about in the subcommittee, two separate but very related things. One, and our public speakers today talked about the need for road improvements on Oldagora, and then two, or in Chesbrough, and then two are, is the trail plan. My understanding of the road improvements is, is that's happening. That's separate from this goal. And I, and I support also the goal, but I just want to clarify that.
Yes, that's correct. But I think there was, the community brought up some concerns on, I believe it was like some potholes and maybe some, I'll call it shoving on the side of the roads, or where some of the side was failing, because it was dirt rather than concrete or asphalt. And so staff is looking at that, or has looked at that, as well as, yes, there is a portion of work that's scheduled to be done. But I, but I think the other part of what you're saying is, is they'd like to, they wanted us to go out and look at what we can address now and try to preserve some of the road. We are, we're doing that, but I'm not, I didn't bring that up, because that's not a goal. We're just doing that as part of it.
Exactly. And so that's just what I wanted to lift up, is that, listen, we're not going to be able to do 150 for it, as you guys probably, so we're going to have to do a reduced amount. But we will be, I will support, it sounds like Jeremy, councilmember Wolf will also support moving forward with the Oldagora Trails, probably at a reduced amount. But that the work on the road is separate and apart from that, and still happening. Okay, terrific.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? I'm sorry.
Just, just one comment, or two comments. Very supportive of all of this, particularly Lake Lindero. It's something that I've been hearing from, I live in Lake Lindero, and I've been hearing from residents, really since I ran for office, but it was not really feasible until now, just because of all of their internal battles that have been really long and drawn out. So I'm happy that this is actually on our, it's been on our goal in that red column a couple of times. And so I'm happy to see it in the not red, in the blue column. Disappointed about the additional vehicle charging stations. I understand what you're saying. I do hope that even though it's not a financial goal for us this year, that you're still always on the lookout. I do hear from residents that the, the charging station on Canaan in the shopping centers is always full, that there, there is demand for more. You know, we are moving to more electric vehicles. So I hope that even, even though right now it's not particularly a good time fiscally, that you'll keep an eye out. Because if there are grants or opportunities, then I certainly want to take advantage of it, because it is something that I'm hearing from the community that we need more of.
I definitely want to make some comments on that one. In our community, one of the things that's happening in the Whizzen Center is that they're going to add 20 of the electric charging stations for the Teslas. And as long as you have an adapter, you can charge on the Tesla stations. And those are fast chargers. And there's a big difference between a fast charger and a regular charger. All the ones that we've implemented in our city are the slow chargers. They charge at about 6 volts per hour. And 6 volts get you from about your house to here in round trip. So it doesn't, it doesn't put a lot of energy in an electric vehicle. So the reason why there's a backup in the shopping center is because those are fast chargers. And the fast chargers are what everybody wants, because you can charge your electric vehicle in 20 minutes there, instead of taking six or seven hours to charge it at one of the slow stations. So if we were ever to implement any more in the city, my advocacy would be, we need to try to find grants to try to implement the fast chargers, or try to upgrade our current chargers from what they are to the fast chargers. Because that's really what's in demand going forward. So that's on the charging. But the Whizzen Center, I think the owner of the Whizzen Center said that the electric company was supposed to implement that sometime in the next month or two, that that's going to be up and running. So I think that'll be great for our community. up and running. So I think that'll be great for our community going forward. And then I'm all for the trails proposal going forward. If we can implement that, even if we have to implement it over a two-year period, I believe that that would be great for the city. Those are my comments.
Thank you. And to follow up on that, I know my husband just received a free Tesla adapter from the company he bought his car from, so he will be able to go and use those fast chargers. I also agree that we need to find as much as we can for the trails and bike way improvements in Oldagora. Unfortunately, it's not going to be 150,000 this year, but when we get to the end, we'll look and see what we can do there. And I agree with everybody else too, all the other. Luckily, we've got a solid waste fund and we've got Measure W funds to fund a lot of these programs in Public Works. So we're probably going to get a lot more in Public Works than in any other committee, just because we have those other parts to draw from.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I just want, it was challenging. There was, you know, like, I think, 10 items in the Public Works, and it was really hard to narrow it down. So I commend the work by Charmaine and my fellow committee member.
Well, thank you. You've done a good job. All right, moving on.
Okay, we'll move to community services. The first is to adjust community events to be more Agora Hill centric. The subcommittee recommended up to 5,000 to be used as general fund for a variety of things at concerts, whatnot. That may be something that the council discusses. We can look for sponsorships or those kind of things. We'll talk about that in a minute. The next is complete Morrison Park Playground Project, which would be the utilization of special funds, Measure A and CDBG. And I know there's a question of is CDBG going to be around? We have just recently got confirmation that the next allotment will. And we've done anything and everything we can possibly do. JT has, and our staff has really just done a great job of trying to get ahead of this and get all this in front of the council. So that appears to, beyond that, I can't promise anything. Nobody can, but at least next year. And that's the kind of piece that we need. Next is the Wildlife Crossing Public Art. The discussion revolved around, we've had discussions with members from the Wildlife Federation, and it appears they're also on board and doing this, but they need some time to decide the what and the where. And so there's no dollar amount assigned to this. And so the subcommittee recommended putting this in the second year of the budget cycle, and then we can come at the mid-cycle budget to determine any amount that would be required.
Thank you.
And go ahead and turn it over.
Councilmember Anstead, since this is our committee, do you want to, any?
I think, I mean, the main thing on this is just try to adjust a little bit with the community events, whether we're trying to just give a little bit more money to try to see if we do anything in addition to what we've already been doing with the parks, with the concerts in the park and the drone show that we've had as well going forward. And then the Morrison Park Playground Project, most of the funds are coming from a lot of other additional sources, but we're obviously adding some to that. And it looks like that's going forward. And I think both those two were kind of big priorities for the city. And then the public art spaces, I think you could talk to that more than I can, I think, maybe on that one. But those were the two.
Thank you. Well, I'm really happy that we're going to hopefully have a ribbon cutting in Morrison Park Playground. I can see Amy over there hiding. So I'm looking forward to that. And that is coming out of special funds, so it doesn't affect our 150,000 allocation. And again, the art and public places, we have money set aside for that when we're ready to do it. And then to make our events more community friendly, I like the idea, which I believe is at no cost, if I'm correct, Amy, if we had some local, open up to a local community, opening acts. So if there's a local band that would like to open up the concerts, we can do that. The stage is already there. The equipment's already there. So it wouldn't cost anymore, but it would bring the community in more, which would be wonderful. The other idea that was suggested was a beer garden for maybe one of the concerts, but we would need to have a sponsor for that. But I don't think we could, this year, we can't allocate funds to that. But if we can find a sponsor, anybody out there listening would like to sponsor a beer garden, we'd love to have you. So that's something we can work on without any costs. So we got lucky in that Community Services Committee.
Can I ask a question? So I'm not understanding the community events to be more Agora centric. You're not suggesting we take money away from concerts in the park and drone shows and things like that? Like, I don't understand, what is that?
They meant adding something like, so at the beginning of a concert.
Okay, that's what you're referring to. That's where the 5,000?
Well, we wouldn't, we won't allocate any funds to it, but we'll.
But what is the $5,000?
Well, that would be like if we did the beer garden, but obviously, we can't do that.
Just double checking. So you're saying you're adding on to focus on Agora centric?
Yes.
Or whatever, not taking anything away from?
No, no, no.
Is there community events? I mean, people come from all over the city.
No, no, we're not taking anything away. We just wanted to, you know, make it even richer.
Okay, great.
But this year, we won't do it with monetary, you know, funds from the general fund. We'll just try and encourage, like, you know, opening up to a high school band or something. They can get some exposure.
Okay.
And anywhere in the Conejo Valley, it doesn't just have to be in our city, because we get, as you said, we get people coming from all over.
Well, that's why I was concerned. I wasn't.
Yeah, nothing's to be taken away from.
I love this, and I think it's all fantastic. And I super love the idea of having local event, like local artists. And we have so many of them, and we have a lot of our, not just our students, opening up for some of the bands. This was a goal that I had put on there. That wasn't what I was thinking, but I love it. And what I, and I am totally fine, given our budget situation, not having any funds devoted to it. And Amy would love to brainstorm with you and would be happy to look for sponsors. The idea was also, now that I'm hearing this one, was also to have events that actually drew just more from Agora Hills. I had one resident in particular who, I won't say her name from the die, just in case she wouldn't want it to be public, but she said, you know, Kate, those concerts in the park are fun. She's like, but I would really like to get to know my neighbors more. You know, could we have events that are smaller? And we do have a number of them. And she was, she appreciates them, and she and her husband, and it's funny, they've been coming to so many. She appreciates them, and could we do more? And I really think, you know, our isolation is a public health crisis that is awful. And I think we have such a close-knit community to build on that even more than we are, so that we can just strengthen that sense of neighbor to neighbor and knowing each other. It's what I'd love to see us do.
And what I would, to follow up on that, we have several senior events up at the community center. And maybe we should look at opening those up a little more, inviting other residents to come, because, you know, it doesn't just have to be seniors. It can be for the seniors, but to interact. Sorry, we're meandering.
Since that wasn't part of the goal, we really can't discuss any of that tonight. But we'll look into anything and everything in all of our programming that we can.
Okay, moving on.
Move to the next subcommittee of law enforcement, fire, emergency response. The first recommendation is consider establishing a memorandum of understanding with Southern California Edison for support centers after PSPS. The cost of this is 9,100 for the first year and 2,100 for the second year out of the general fund. It would be our Recreation and Events Center. There's just some requirements that go with the MOU. We've already checked into those, and we would meet those requirements. The second is wildfire prevention, home hardening or fire resilience program. And the subcommittee recommended up to $100,000 on the general fund. And again, that grant we discussed earlier possibly could be applied to this program. We just don't have all the parameters yet. Enhance emergency evacuation education. The subcommittee recommended $10,000 for marketing and education materials. Again, that is something maybe we can do in-house as we further that discussion. Electronic bikes would be the next item, and an update to municipal code and our park rules. That will have no dollar figure attached to it, just staff time to review and prepare any code amendments. The next is backup internet services for hard-to-reach areas in the community. The recommendation is for staff to bring back analysis only, no funding allotted for this. And just as a side note, Mr. Devon, myself have been working with the fiber optic project that is with our COG. We may have found a solution that may not have a cost directly to the city. No promises yet. We're still working on a lot of the details, but we've done a ton of research. So we'll bring you back that analysis, and that would be what the goal is, so consistent with that. The next is to promote our cert program to rebrand and recruit additional community members. That would only require staff time. And they do have a existing budget for, a small budget for supplies that is typically put in the city's overall emergency services budget. And the next is volunteers on patrol and looking at them for the real-time crime center. No funding attached to that. It would be something, because it's a LA County Sheriff program, staff would just work with them on recruiting people for that. The next is to explore an option for liaison deputy. So right now, no contract city can add additional deputies. There is a freeze placed by Sheriff Luna on the addition of any deputies. The subcommittee discussed then looking at private security for some of that and a lot of $30,000 for that. And we can discuss that option a little bit, but we'll do that as we move into kind of our general fund discussion. The one goal that was proposed not to move forward is the speed cameras near Race, Adobe, and Lake Linderoe. The reasoning behind this is that it is a pilot program at this point, and we are not eligible to join that. It doesn't mean that we can't look at it in the future. I do understand that there are concerns from the community in speeding that area. And I know there's probably a question about how do we address that. I have met with our interim sheriff captain, and this is one of the top items that we'll be discussing with them in the upcoming months. So with that, I'll turn it over for any comments from the council.
Thank you. Councilmember Anstead, this is our committee. Do you want to?
Yeah, you can go. I'm not on the committee anymore.
Can you remind me, City Manager Hamburger, why we have to pay out of pocket for an SCE MOU? Is it just because of facility requirements? Like, can you remind me why this would be out of our pocket and not SCE's?
Can I defer to Mr. Devon? He really is the expert on that one.
Absolutely. Hi, Councilmember Klein Lopez. So the first year, the 9,100 was supposed to be for equipment expenses. So they had things where if it was to be allowed at the event center, it would need to be TVs, refrigerators. There was equipment purchases in that first year. And so we were assuming that that would be in the ballpark of about 9,100. And then the second year is just the staff time and the security that's required to pay for that second year, because we are required to have some folks working it to set up, clean up, and then have, we're required to provide security for the centers also.
And just remind me, so I understand our staff time, we obviously need to be there when things like this happen. But did we talk to Edison about their contribution to this? Because the whole point is for us to be made whole by their power shut-offs. So I know we talked about it, but can you remind me, why is Edison not paying for this?
We, so what we talked about was that we are, that's a point of conversation with them. But as you know, they do have their requirements as part of even having this be considered. And so that's what's been laid out for us, the way the costs end up working out that way. So, but we definitely plan on, if this is a goal that moves on, we would have that conversation with them to see how those costs can be better distributed.
Yeah, I mean, I guess knowing that we've got some general fund crunches, is there a way we can have this conversation with them without necessarily committing to the 9,100?
Yeah, I mean, the, yes, I think we can definitely have that conversation. And we can figure out maybe even fine tuning a little bit to see how strict it is, the quantity of the different equipment that they talk about, maybe bring that cost down. So we can have that conversation sooner rather than later.
Okay. That's what I would recommend. And I'm very happy and excited to hear that there might be a solution. I won't hold you to it, to the backup internet services, particularly during Kenneth and Palisades Fire, places like Liberty Canyon didn't have power. Soul Towers went out. They were still in their homes. They didn't want to leave. They were afraid of being looted, but they didn't, we were worried they were going to not get the call to leave if the fires got closer. So I know it's a tough one, but I really appreciate you guys still looking for solutions for that. Those are my comments on the ones that were important that I brought to the table. And then I don't know if you have anything you want to add.
No, I second that. I think it's important that we do have a support center set up, but we can look at, I mean, we may already have some of the equipment that they're asking for. We have fridges up there. We have television monitors up there. So hopefully, we can lower the amount of our overhead to get it established. So am I understanding, so the first year would just be creating it but not running it, and they wouldn't actually run it until year two, because you're saying staff time is only year two?
They would run it. They'd run it.
No, it's just the initial investment in equipment.
Right. So, but when you said.
But every time it runs, we would have staff there, and it would be at our cost.
So we could allocate, I mean, and maybe we could, if there's additional equipment that's needed, we could maybe push some of it to year two, find out what the essentials are. Okay. And then again, because I keep going on about the home hardening, how important it is, I don't know, obviously, we can't do 100,000, but whatever we can do to help us, you know, improve that. And I think we should take into account when we assign funds, general funds to it, that we should allow something for administrative staff costs, because our staff aren't running the home hardening program. The fire safety council is, and they do have overhead costs. So whatever we do, I think a percentage of it, I don't know what that would be, but should be allowed to go towards their admin costs. And education, emergency evacuation education, again, I think we can do that in-house. Mary, we're going to be leaning on you for that. And you've done an amazing job so far. E-bikes, we all know what's going on there, but that's not a monetary allocation, so that's great. And fingers crossed for our fiber optic project with the COG. So, and again, for the wildfire protection, if we, maybe that Santa Monica Mountains grant can stop, a portion of it can go to our home hardening program. So I think that was, that was it. And yeah, and then the liaison deputy with Lost Hills, I think you're right, we wait until we see what the new captain has set in motion, whoever that may be, and go from there.
So maybe if we move to the next slide, again, I want to be clear, I'm not trying to dictate any numbers. I'm just trying to help facilitate a conversation to get us to a number that works and accomplishes many goals as possible. So any of these are wide open. I just tried to identify the general fund items here. I mentioned the tree management plan we can do for 25,000, put the plan together. Oldagora Trails, we could do, keep that a priority. Put $60,000 in the first year, put $150,000 in the next fiscal year. We'll discuss the MOU. It sounds like the direction from the council. What I'm hearing is potentially just look at if we can get Edison to cover the cost for those, so we can approach that if that's the desire of the council, and keep that goal. The home hardening program, again, we can reduce that number. I think the emergency evacuation education, I mentioned, I think we can do that internally so that we can eliminate that $10,000. The liaison deputy, rather than doing that, is just work with our new captain. They're looking at what they'll call virtual deputies, really utilizing cameras in the real-time crime center. So there are things that are available there that are being funded by the Sheriff's Department that we could utilize. We'll need to discuss the Oldagora overlay design, the hillside ordinance, and then the civic center or public gathering place. And it sounds like Agora Hills centric events or community events we can do either with the sponsorship or no additional funding. So with that, I want to open it up for discussion of all of you and see if there's, we can come direction, Mayor.
Right. So, but adding this up, this is more than 150.
So, yeah, again, I'm not trying to, I don't want to dictate any numbers to you. I want, I just am trying to facilitate a conversation in something that's.
I'm happy to jump in.